We will bring our December the fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting to order. And the crowd looks good today, and we thank you for being here. And we want to recognize our new Commissioner, Robert Burleson. We want him to feel comfortable and just all of us work together. That's what it's all about. And let's all bow our heads, please. Our kind version, Heavenly Father, as we bow our head today. We want to thank you for all the seasons that you give us, that we can enjoy, our friends and our families. And during this season, Lord, we pray to bless those, Lord, that are in need. And, Lord, we pray to guide us during this agenda and let us do the right things for the county. And we thank you, Lord, for each one that's here today. Amen. Everyone stand and will do our pledge to the flag and Tim Ulias.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we, it's time to pick our officers. And I'm going to turn it over to the manager for us to elect the Chairman.
All right, and Board in three point one A one is election of Chairman. So I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of Chair of the Avery County Board of Commissioners.
I'd nominate Ms. Martha Hicks.
I'll second that.
Do I have a motion?
They made the motion.
Yeah, they made the motion.
Okay, that's the motion.
Any discussion.
Any discussion.
Go for vote.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Chairman, I will turn the meeting back over to you.
I want to thank all the Board members that has confidence in me enough to be the Chair. And, you know, we just work together and try to do everything right. All right, three point one A, number two, election of the Vice Chairman.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Dennis Solbridge.
Do I hear?
Ask if there's any more nominations.
Any more nominations?
No.
I'll nominate, uh.
Tim?
Tim Phillips, yeah.
All right, we have two on the floor for nominations. All right, everyone that is for Dennis Solbridge for the Vice Chairman, raise your hand. All right, and everyone that's for Tim Phillips, raise your hand. All right, so, Mr. Tim, you have the Vice Chairman again.
There's some things you just don't do.
All right, we'll move right along to three point one A three, appointments of our officers. And we first will go with the manager. He tried to get me to do it different, but, you know, he's not about saying. All right, our manager, do I hear a nomination for manager?
Nominate Philip Berger Jr.
Second.
We have the motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Philip.
All right, Mr. Manager, you've got it.
Thank you, Board.
And then our next is our Attorney. Do I hear a nomination for Attorney?
Nominate Michelle Corr.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, next is our Finance Officer. Do I hear a motion to appoint someone for our Finance Officer?
I nominate Philip Caleb Hogan.
Second.
All right, all that's in favor of Caleb Hogan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Full board, that's good.
Thank you.
Can we say yes twice?
Now then, the last one, but not the least one, our Clerk and Assistant County Manager. Do I hear an appointment for that?
I nominate Cindy Turpfield.
Second.
All right, we have our appointment. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move right along to three point two A. We did have a lady that was going to come, but she had sickness and we'll put her on the next agenda, Karen Wals. All right, three point two B, I believe we have someone today that would like to speak in public comments, and Gary Gardner. Go ahead. Greg?
Greg, that's my office, Gary, that's okay.
Yeah, you don't care for me to call you that.
I don't, that's fine. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Greg Gardner of the Three Mile Community. And government's first and foremost responsibility is the safety and protection of its citizens. With our new Sheriff, I believe our county has the opportunity for an exceptional Sheriff's Office with a qualified, well-trained, and experienced department. And I'd ask you Commissioners to give Sheriff Henley the support and resources he needs to do the job effectively. I was rightly named Gregory, it's from the Greek derived from the late Latin, which means watchman. And I am a government watchdog. I stay informed and I hold government accountable on the local, state, and federal levels. So, by the way, Sheriff Henley had nothing whatsoever to do with this address. But that's just what I want to say, little reminder, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak in public comment? You know, this morning, Mr. Henley took the oath, and he's the only Sheriff that we've ever had that had to be sworn in three times. So he's broken a record.
For one term.
All right, we'll move right along to three point two C, Board Appointments. We have one Board Appointment that was in last month's agenda package. It's Whammy Community Action Committee. And, all right, Philip, you'll have to help me with that.
And I hope I don't, I hope I get it right. Kathy Bursh.
Bursh. All right.
And the application has been reviewed.
Did we hear a motion to appoint Kathy for the Whammy Community Action Committee? I believe that Ken, it and she from Land Harder, or not?
Yes.
She is from Land Harder, okay? Do I hear?
That's her point.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to appoint and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Three point three A, Tara Finner.
Finner, that's right.
Is that right?
That's it, you got it.
She's our, gonna give us our audit report.
All right, so you all have the hard copies. I'm not going to go through that in detail. We're going to do a high-level summary. If you have questions, don't stop me, I'm happy to talk through them. So, as you mentioned, I'm Tara Finner. I am a Senior Manager with Blackburn Children's in Stigall. I will be Partner effective January one, so moving on. But, so this is probably the only year that it'll be signed by anyone other than me. If you continue to use our firm, I'll leave a sign or any reports going forward. If you start out with the report, the first page that you come to that's on our BCS letterhead, that's our opinion letter, and it lays out what our responsibilities are, what your responsibilities are, and what our actual opinion is with regard to the audit and the supplemental information for the grants. And we did have a clean opinion, so it's unmodified, it's the best that you can get, which is awesome. Following the opinion letter, we have the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is actually written by Caleb, and it ties into the financial statement numbers. But it also gives you all an opportunity to outline specific changes within your organization, anything that maybe you want to bring attention to for capital asset activity, debt activity, and also comparisons to previous year financial information, so that you can show what some of those changes really are. The government-wide financials, the numbers that I'm going to talk about focus on those. I haven't gotten into a lot of the fund level information in my summaries, because that's what you all typically are used to going over on a regular basis. In the government-wide financials, that starts on page fourteen. Total assets for the county for the year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-two was eighty-seven million, two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight. Then you have deferred outflows and inflows that are related to your pension and OPEP plans. With those numbers, they're based on actuarial studies. You don't really have a lot of input or influence on how those change from year to year, because it's based on participants in those plans, mortality tables, and things like that. Liabilities for the government were twenty million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty. And then total net position was sixty-six million, five ninety-seven. Of that amount, thirty-four million, seven ninety-three is invested in capital assets. So that's the total of everything you've put into infrastructure, buildings, equipments, less the depreciation that's on those. That number also includes the construction in progress. So what you have going on with the community, act, community building, and high school renovation projects, those costs are in there as well. Overall, net position increased eleven million, five eighty-three for the year. So it's very, very good numbers to look at. One thing that you may notice in the fund levels, we did have a prior period adjustment. That was just to correct the amortization on a bond discount that was paid off during the year. That should have been reported at the government-wide level, so you don't see it when you get to those statements. So if you're wondering at the fund level, because it's a long-term transaction, it shouldn't have been in the fund level statements. So that's really not a huge deal, just a quick difference between those fund level and government-wide ones that's specific to this year. As far as capital assets, you did have three point two million that went into construction in progress during the year. And increases in actual capital purchases, that was about nine hundred and ninety-two thousand. And those are for things like ambulance, software, vehicles. That's kind of how it's important for the community to see how you all are investing back into the community with those assets. Debt activity, you all did pay down a million, fifty-nine thousand in your debt this year, so that's a huge chunk off of that. You all made a lot of progress and didn't take out new debt. The only thing new on the debt-wise that you'll see, Gatsby eighty-seven was applicable this year. That's with regard to leases. Essentially, you have the liability that goes on the books for the lease that you have contracted for, but then you also have the right to use the asset that you're leasing. So you'll see that in your capital assets as well as your debt this year. Moving on to grants, because that's usually the next biggest hot topic, is what did we get grant-wise? What did we spend the funds on? Federal grant expenditures, you had two point nine million this year. A lot of that was Department of Social Services, transportation, community development-related. Your state expenditures, five hundred and ten thousand. And the bulk of that was also DSS, social services. With regard to reporting in the back of the audit, you have three letters. One of those just says that we've looked at some internal controls and compliance under governmental accounting standards, and then under uniform guidance, which is your federal grant guidance, and then also the State Single Audit Implementation Act. Under all three of those, we have no findings to report. So that's huge kudos to you all. Clean opinion, no issues. Earnings for the year, I mean, all across the board, it looks like a really good picture. The only other thing that I think I would point out on the grants, the ones that we tested as major this year were the Medical Assistance Program and the Social Services Block Grant. Major state grant was the Foster Home Fund Maximization. In addition to the report, we do issue two other letters. The thicker of those letters is a required board communication letter. That is where we are to outline any major areas of concern. Did we have disagreements? What kind of journal entries did we post? So really, a lot of boilerplate language there that we have to include. If you are interested, the journal entries that we posted are attached to the back of that letter. And the second letter is where, if we had any issues that we wanted to communicate, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, which we had none of, we also would've put those in this letter with our other matters. Other matters are just things that aren't significant enough to be in the report, but maybe, you know, we wanna draw management and board attention to them. We did have two comments in there. One was related to capital assets, just the posting of the expenditures. You all used that capital outlay account, but it was hard to reconcile the total expenses to what you added to fixed assets. Part of that is because there are things less than your capitalization threshold that go in those expense accounts. So that's what that difference was. The only other item was accrued wages because of the way that the payrolls fell this year. A large portion of that first July payroll ended up being for June time that was worked. So really, nothing major, you know, to go over on the findings aspect, so. Are there any questions about the report or the letters?
Looks like our finance officer's done a good job.
Absolutely. And I know it's hard on a first-year audit. I know changing auditors can be a big deal. But everybody that we worked with was, you know, eager to help, it was really pleasant. So I think all in all, it went really well. Everything has been submitted to the state. So now we're just ready to wrap it up and move on to next year.
That sounds wonderful.
Well, thank you all for your time. If there are any other questions, I think you have my contact information. If not, Caleb can get it to you, certainly let me know and I'll go through them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Caleb, and your staff.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. We need a motion to approve the audit report. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move on to 3.3B, our subdivision approval, West Ridge at Eagles Nest. Mr. Bear?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I am here to present the phase three of the West Ridge section at Eagles Nest. This section is just continuation of the last plat we had in here, which is the same section off of McGuire Road off of Bull Beach Mountain. And it has been through all the necessary planning board and Planning Department approvals. And I'm open to any question you guys may have on that.
And this one is the last one, it'll be?
There'll be one more, it'll be, there's four phases, yep. There'll be one more final plat coming on that section, and that'll about get really close to wrapping us up. We've got a few little, few very small outliers, but nothing much, so we're getting close to the finish line up there.
There was a question I noticed in here about turnaround auto pacific road that did not meet the county ordinance. Has that been resolved?
That has been resolved, and I think that's a, it's probably a little bit deeper subject that I imagine the board's gonna be looking into, some ordinance changes and some stuff that I think that they've been in contact with Paul already all about rewriting some things to clarify. There's certain items in the ordinance, as I'm sure you're aware, that have been in there for years that are a little gray or have been administered a different way. Up until this point, it's always been looked upon as, it's regardless of seven or fifty feet to a turnaround. Everything that we've always done over the last fifteen years in any community has always been, you can never be further than seven-hundred-and-fifty feet away at any given time with a fire truck. And so that made the distance a total of fifteen-hundred feet. So if you're going from the intersection to a cul-de-sac or intersection to intersection, that you're always within that seven-fifty turnaround. It's the way that it's always been done. Every plat that we've ever presented has been that exact way. It was brought up in the previous meeting that the wording could either say that or could mean it cannot be further than seven-fifty, which means from the intersection to the turnaround, seven-hundred-and-fifty feet. And so there was, you know, some discussion in the planning board meeting of how that should be. And I think they've since, I think the county attorney and pilot talked, and I think they're gonna talk with the planning board about kinda re-looking at that and look at some other mountain counties. I think Wautoga County, which has already been, that's already been presented. I think Paul actually had some helping writing. Wautoga County's ordinance, which states further, the problem with it being every seven-hundred-and-fifty feet here in the mountains, that's pretty close. And you start running into topo challenges on property that, you know, every seven-fifty, it just doesn't make sense. And so I think that's gonna be addressed a little further and deeper in planning board and presented to you guys about changing that ordinance. And like I say, there's a lot of things in that that need to be clarified. So it's easier for us as contractors and developer to know exactly what the county expects. And it also makes it simpler for the planning department and also the planning board, so that there's no gray area. It's very clear what's required. But to your question, that has been, that particular issue has been, I think, resolved. And Paul's sent a letter, I think you guys may have a copy of that saying that.
Yes.
That particular road meets what they're looking for.
Any commissioner got any more questions?
Just one small and just a point of clarification. I note on the planning board minutes that this plat was approved contingent upon some minor changes. We just want assurance that all those have been addressed.
They have been addressed. And anytime that any plat's approved contingent upon something, that generally goes back to the chairman of the planning board, which is Mr. Mike Lacy. So those were all addressed, took back for him to sign off on. There were some questions upon some surveying and some survey standards. And I will make a point while we're discussing this, that while the board is looking at the ordinance and reviewing certain things as fire truck turnarounds, also clarification upon what the planning board actually reviews and what is gone over in those meetings. It's our understanding, and it's our understanding through the ordinance and dealing with other counties who ordinances are very similar, that when you get into the survey standards on each plat, all that is to be looked at is, is that plat stamped by a registered certified North Carolina surveyor? So if that plat has that stamp or that seal from a surveyor, that meets the requirement of the ordinance. And I will just make note that most planning board meetings that we are, I won't say most, I'll say all planning board meetings that we attend, ninety percent of the time is spent upon going in the great detail in survey standards and actually looking at every single distance on the plat, every meets, every bounds, looking at the curve table, looking at the line table. All these things, which I think per the ordinance is overstepping the bounds and the power of the planning board. And it puts, really, everyone involved at a disadvantage, starting with even the planning department. When we submit these plats to the planning department to review and their review officer, they look at, does it have that surveyor's seal and stamp? They're not surveyors, they don't know how to look into a curve table and a call table and see if this line matches that line. So at that point in time, when they approve it, we don't have, you know, any notification, we assume it's good. When we get to the planning board, they start going down that rabbit hole of, let's look at every single little item on the survey. It puts us at a disadvantage because we wasn't given the time during the two-week review process that the planning department can catch something and we can make that change and still make the planning board meeting. All other mountain counties that we deal with, that is the way that the procedure works. They look at that survey, and if I'm looking at it, I'm not a surveyor, I can't tell you if it's got his seal on there, then I assume that it's correct. So for us, we don't know, for planning department, they don't know. And short of Mike being on the board, the rest of the board members don't know, just because, of course, Mike being a surveyor, it's his business. So I don't know if there's, to make this a better process, if we clarify that moving forward, that if it has that seal from a North Carolina surveyor, that's as far as we go with it. Because at that point, the county's not liable, nobody's liable. That surveyor's on the hook for that plat. So that'd be one other thing when digging in and diving into those points, because a lot of the stuff in that was, a lot of the stuff that was approved contingent upon was not actually, there wasn't fault in it. And when talking to surveyors, you know, there's two ways to actually do a lot of different jobs. This surveyor may do it a little different way than what Mike does his, but at the end of the day, they're both correct. And so again, that holds us at a disadvantage if we're having to guess at something or trying to assume something might be other than what it is.
I appreciate the point, I do. And my question comes basically from just trying to reconcile that our report said that this was contingent, and when it comes to us, not having had another meeting or anything, I just want to be sure that we cover all of our bases to assure that that those contingencies have been dealt with properly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. And like I say, Mike, he's got a signature block on there on all these plats where he has to sign off, and he won't until he feels comfortable.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Move we approve?
All right, we need a motion to approve the West Ridge at Eagles Nest blocks WR-32-35, 37-44, 47-52 subdivision.
Move we approve?
All right.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Moore, I'll need your signature.
All right.
Thank you all, thank you, board.
One thing we know, when the planning board approves it, we're pretty well ready to prove it here because they will point out what needs to be taken care of. We appreciate our planning board. All right, we'll move right along to 3.3C, our Avery County Economic Development Committee request, Ken Walker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am here to request your approval. You all have a copy of this. This is the ad that we propose to put in the Avery Chamber of Commerce Tourist and Business Guide. And just real quickly, previously during budget time, you approved going from a half-page ad to a full-page ad. So what you're looking at is, this top part is basically exactly what was in last year's guide. What we've done, and whoops, trying to get away. There really wasn't much that explained economic development and who we were. And so this is the part that we've added on to make it a full-page ad. And this copy I pulled from our website. So it's all copy that you've all approved. So there's nothing new there, other than that we're adding it to the ad, but it's copy that you've all seen before. And that's it, and I'd be more than willing to answer any questions.
Has anybody got any questions or comments? I'd like to say that it really looks nice.
It is.
The full-page ad.
I mean, it just, it does Avery County proud.
It does.
I'm not sure if you're opposed to approve the layout as presented.
I'm not second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we thank you, Mr. Keith.
Thank you all, board. I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
You too. All right, we'll move along to 3.3D, To River Health District. Madison Gardner.
Mason.
Mason.
Madison, Mason.
Claude. Thank you all for having me and allowing me to talk today. And allow me to introduce myself, my name's Mason Gardner. I'm currently the interim health director for To River Health District. We at the Health Department have decided to seek some approval on some of our fees. And those are an engineering option permit fee and a tattoo parlor fee and a tattoo artist fee. Part of that is going through our board of health members, and that's been voted on and approved. The second portion is to allow the citizens that we serve the opportunity to speak about it, to ask questions, and to also get our county partners' approval as well. The engineering option permit is a state set fee of thirty percent. We can't charge anything more than thirty percent of a regular accepted permit for an establishment. We currently did not have this fee on the books, so we would like to establish this fee so we could charge that fee and just get our paperwork in order. The second fee that we are changing is the tattoo parlor fee. The new fee is seven hundred dollars annually and an annual artist fee of five hundred dollars. And we are asking that those fees go into effect February the first, 2023. Does anybody have any questions or anything like that?
Just on the, the EOP, I realize this is a state-approved diversion process for a farmer, developer, I'm understanding an individual even can go this route to have an engineered system. How prevalent is that within the county, just based on history?
That is a good question. Since the state approved that process, we have probably had less than twenty. It's rather expensive, because you have to go through an engineering firm, you have to have a soil scientist, so they're rather expensive. The Health Department is the cheaper option to steal, so it is not prevalent at all.
And one other question, whenever that process begins and the engineer becomes involved, does, it comes back to the Health Department for final approval, correct?
No. If it's a true engineered option permit, the engineering firm will assume all liability. The health department's role in that is only to document paperwork and to attend the final. We, the health department or the county assumes any liability.
So we're not liable? My ultimate question was, the ultimate question was, if this process begins, then the onus is on the homeowner or developer, whomever, and the engineer to have a system that's long-term functioning? And if there's any issues down the road or questions after the fact, then it is back to the engineer and the owner of the permit?
Yes, they assume the liability. They may call us at some point and say, hey, we've got a failure, but the onus and liability is on that engineering firm, as I proposed.
And I understand this as being an option before it just, you want to get it on the books and clean up the paperwork.
That's correct. The state approved this option and the fees that could be charged, and we're just making sure our house is in order and we're going through the correct process.
And if we don't approve this, then we can't charge for it, can we?
That is correct.
Has anyone got any questions?
What are they charging for?
They're charging for us to do, to sign the document saying we received it, and then we have a function for one of our inspectors to go on site, just to be there. We can't say, no, that's not appropriate, or no, that's not right. We're just called to go and be present.
How much is that fee?
The fee will be 30% of whatever the application rate would be. Say it was the 1,500 square foot of the house, we would charge 30% for our regular fee.
So that's for, like, local people right there trying to build a house would have to do the same thing?
No. If they wanted to bypass the health department, yes, they could do that.
But what if they had a place where they had to have it engineered?
We would charge that 30% fee for that.
I'm not really pulled up myself.
All right.
Well, is that, going off what Robert said, is that if the state forces you, if you have to have an engineered, or second system, let's just say, and then by statute, you have to charge that 30%? Is that right?
That statute is saying we can only charge it up to...
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
That if I had to, they could charge you up to 30%.
Right. Okay.
All right. Do we have motion to approve this?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. All right. All right. We'll go ahead and go to 3.3E, our tax administrators' report, Andrea Thurgill.
I would like for you to approve our collections for the month of November of $4,647,314,02.
I hear a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I hear second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Just a small fact, we're a million dollars ahead in collections this year than we were last year, even with rebal, that's still pretty good for...
Yes, it is.
And I have $168 in releases. We double billed a piece of equipment.
Move we approve.
Second.
All in favor, for releases, for $168, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
And then moving on to our sales for the month of November. Our sales have slowed down. We had 47 qualified sales for the month of November, but our sales are still above tax value. Our tax sales percentage is at 68%, which is pretty close to what we were last month, just a little. And I included some tax cards, so you could just kind of see the progression of 2018, 2022, and then what it wound up selling for. And then I also wanted to let you know, I brought, we have three new appraisers, but one of them couldn't be here today. I have Melissa Carter and Marty Dillinger, and then we have Nick Warner, and all three of them are, they've hit the road hard. They're out measuring, they're learning quick, they're moving fast, and I'm very grateful to have them, because, you know, we lost Seth and then Tammy retired, so we've got a whole new appraisal staff. So we're playing catch-up, but they're doing it, and I wanted y'all to meet them. And I'll bring Nick next time.
Andrea, I heard one of them say the other day, and I was coming around the corner, and they didn't know I was around, they said, "I love my job," and that just made me really glad that you can hear that from a new employee.
Yeah, that makes me feel good.
Don't that make you feel good?
And Aaron asked me if I brought my own entourage with me today, and I told him yes, because we're a really good group.
Well, we're glad to have you on board, and you, we're glad to have new employees. We thought of having to take all these people that's retiring. But we thank you for applying for the job. But it's really good to hear a new employee say they love their job. They'll stay with you. All right. We'll move right along to 3.3F. We have a resolution to award John Hicks his sidearm. I'll turn it over to Manuel.
So, board, I will read some of this resolution. Whereas the Avery County Sheriff's Office has in its possession one sidearm being a Glock 23-40 caliber, serial number ABK463 for John Hicks, and whereas the county deems this item to be surplus property, now for the Avery County Board of Commissioners meeting at its regular meeting on 5th of December 2022, hereby resolve that the sidearm being a Glock 23-40 caliber, serial number ABK463, is surplus and shall be awarded to John Hicks for due consideration, such sum being the amount of $1, this the 5th day of December 2022.
I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
Move to approve.
I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. We thank you for that. John put 30 years in, of course, getting in the prison, and that was, the retirement was nice, and I know he appreciates getting to keep his gun. All right. 3.3G, our radio communications company contract.
So, board, we've had several special meetings called about the contract with RCC for a new radio communication system, to upgrade our current system and to replace it. I will point out in number two, Michelle, thank you, she has worked feverishly on this contract. I think it's approved by her, so she has no problem with it. I've been on the phone today with RCC. They also approved.
I mean, just to make sure, you've got the last one that I sent to you, the version two, that has the date filled in in paragraph three, and the language in paragraph two that was changed?
Yes. So I sent that this afternoon, and then you have a copy?
Yes.
Yes. On number two, both parties will make their best efforts for the system and the service to be installed up and running by the 30th of June 2023. However, the system shall be completed by 30th, the 30th of September 2023, unless agreed in writing otherwise by the parties. The company has made a pledge, they are going to be completed before that date, unseeing any supply issues. Also in number three, the payment for the contract, the contractor shall receive from the county the amount of the first payment, and there is an option that we left in the proposal. If the county wishes to exercise this option, it should be exercised by the 30th of June 2023, and it would be an additional $92,000. But that is an option.
And the first option is $1,125,000?
Yes, ma'am.
With one A and one N?
And I'll just jump in here, just to, just to let the board know, the bid on that was, the turnkey system pricing was the 1.125 million, and then there was that option for the additional two sides, for $92,000 was the bid on that. So the county has the option to exercise that $92,000. It's not a requirement, but if they choose to, that would be the price to do those two sides. And Caleb actually has that entire amount proposed as a budgeted amount, just for the board's planning purposes, that I think he's got to submit in his, to the board in a little
Our radios have not been updated in 18 years. So that's why we're doing this. Our radios are old, and if you call in, you want to get in. And that might not happen with those radios. So...
We will have a state-of-the-art system that we can be proud of in Avery County when this contract is in place. Correct, Mr. Paul and Mike?
You are correct.
You're right.
Well, I guess this is a question for Paul for me. What will determine bringing the West Brewer and Seven Devils towers up to speed, but what will determine spending that other $92,000, whether or not we do?
We know for a fact that we really want to do the West Brewer. That's definitely a, will help the county renew it, until we get into it and see the parameters of what it's going to do for Seven Devils and the Emmer shield area, is whether we want to spend that extra money for that area. So that's kind of why it's in limbo. We don't know, we definitely know it's going to affect West Brewer, so half of that, definitely. But with the Emmer shield area, we don't know if we actually need to spend that until we actually get into the basin of what that is.
What will determine, just the ability for the radios to reach?
The area that they reach, yes. It could be doing it off the Beach Mountain Tower, but if we get to a point and say, no, we need to go ahead and upgrade the Seven Devils to talk in, talk and receive, then yes, we need to spend that additional money on that.
Thank you.
I want to thank Paul and Mike for all the hard work that they have done up in our communications, and brought to our attention what we've needed. And I especially want to thank you fellas.
Thank you. I've got one other related question.
All right.
The tower at High, that High Shelby, getting by, the new by for the tower, how far along with that are you?
Should be right into our timeline.
But how far, oh, with being complete?
With being complete, yes. Bar and weather and, you know, things of that nature, but we're actually looking at the same timeline as what we're bringing ours up to speed as well, so.
Any other commissioner got a question for? All right. We'll ask for a motion to approve this.
Move to approve.
I second that. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. All right.
Thank you, board. We, our citizens deserve the best radio system we can have. So we thank you, and I do, I thank Paul and Mike also for bringing that to our attention. We've had some problems in the past.
And with our audit report, we ought to be glad that we've got the money to do it with. And we want our county to be the best in taking care of our county, especially when you're sick and need help. You'd hate if you couldn't get into it to tell them that you only die ambulance. So we want to, while we can, do the best for our county. We'll move along to 3.4A. We kept our county manager coming quite today, but now he's ready to go.
Board, first of all, thank you for the confidence in the vote, and it is a pleasure to serve the citizens of this county that I love. But I just want to point out once again, could not do it without a group of individuals in this, sitting in this room. Cindy, thank you. Michelle, thank you. And Caleb, thank you. The entire staff that we have in Avery County, something to be proud of. So I just wanted to thank you all out loud. Thank you. Broadband, I want to bring everybody up to date. I've been on the phone with Mr. Brooks, with North Carolina DIT. Yes, we are still waiting on paperwork, and I'm sorry that we're still waiting on paperwork to get the great grant up and going. Once we get the great grant up and going, we will then go to our CAB grant, where we, the board has pledged, this board of commissioners has pledged to spend the American Rescue Plan monies on, going with that cab grant, so that we can move forward and get internet to each and every home. And once that grant is spent and finished, then there will be an opportunity to go for the last mile. So I wish I had a better timeline. I'm frustrated as much as anybody else that it's taking this much time, and the state is frustrated, Mr. Brooks is frustrated. So any questions on broadband? And again, to the citizens, I'm sorry we're pushing. I promise I call every other week, just to get an update. Housing, had a meeting with the Dogwood Trust. Our survey inventory that Dogwood paid for should be finished in January. It's going to be a deep dive, big time, into what we need, what they think we need, and what we have as far as assets. Also met with the North Caroli, had a Zoom meeting with North Carolina Housing Finance, and Ned Fowler on housing. So please know that we are, we understand, we need workforce housing in Avery County. We need some affordable housing in Avery County. So we are working toward that. On the drag crisis, we were successful in the grant for the reentry housing with the Community Development Glock grant. Michelle Wall is to be congratulated with High County Council of Governments. She did a great job submitting that grant for us. There will be other opportunities for grants. That was part of the conversation I had with Dogwood. So they are very excited about that, and also been working with Freedom Life on what, you know, this is going to look like, to help those citizens with reentry housing. So it's a, my parole up her sleeves on that one, but I will keep you posted, and I will keep the public posted also. In your informational items, you have your tier system designation, and Avery County is now a tier three. In the state of North Carolina, there are three designations. There are tier one, tier two, and tier three. So the county tier... So the county tier system is incorporated into various state programs to encourage economic activity in the less prosperous areas of the state. So we are now considered a prosperous area of the state. State agencies and some of the private sector nonprofits, organizations choose to adopt the tier system as guidance for determine eligibility requirements for a particular program. So just to let you know that there is no current list, centralized list for the state that tells us what exactly the tier designation would prohibit Avery County from receiving. So there is no list at this time, but I do know this, that it does not affect broadband. So any grants or anything that we get from broadband does not have anything to do with the tier. Now, if you'll remember four or five years ago, it did, because unless you were a tier one county, you could not even submit, submit to a grant for broadband. I did talk to our Economic Development Office for the state, Bill Slagle, that covers our area, and he said, use this toward our advantage with industry, the hotels that we know that we've been talking to and eating and the grocery stores that I've been feverishly trying to get to, to come back to the county. You know, he said, use that to your advantage, you know, use that population growth to your advantage and let them know, you know, that there are people here and moving to Avery County. I know there's questions or does anybody want to make a statement about the tier program?
Just so happens. Whenever we were, this was announced, we, we took a deep dive into the, the analytics by which this has arrived at comes from Department of Information Technology and Department of Commerce. And the numbers, I think this is a classic example of the numbers being right and the math being wrong, because the, the raw data that they are using is being inserted into their formulas and one of the things that really hurts us is that our population only generates on census about 18,000 individuals. From 2010 to 2020, we gained according to the US Census, seven people in Avery County. Those of us who live here know that's probably not true. So, but that, that is the, the information that they use and that discounts a lot of the folks who are here who are landowners and homeowners but are not domiciled here. They are not residents according to the census. So that number is highly skewed and when you take the valuation with our revaluation and divide that by a small number of folks that they consider to be residents, that really inflates that ratio. And that is one of the driving factors behind this designation. We tried to explain that to no avail, but that is one of the, the real driving factor to that. And then one of the other ones is population growth. So we're looking at our, they're saying we're 52nd, no.
On population?
81st. 81st in the state in population growth. And we're looking at our census and going, okay, I think that may be a little off too. But those, those numbers and we're trying to get the worksheets to determine what numbers they're using to arrive at their conclusions. So I, I think their, their math is right, what they're doing. I just think they're putting the wrong numbers in there and that would drastically affect how these ratios are presented and hopefully, right now we're rated, there's 40 tier one, 40 tier two, and 20 tier three counties. We're 91st. And if we could possibly drop, you know, 79 would be a really good number that would drop us. But you know, this is evaluated on an annual basis, but we contacted our legislatures and everything, trying to determine the validity of this assessment because it will affect not only us, but education, lottery funds, several other things as well. So it's, it's a pretty big thing and we are trying desperately to try to get a revision of this at the earliest possible thing, so.
We need to be aware that so many agencies use that tier criteria to, for funding and grant funding, so it could, I mean, you know, the bad part about it is it, it's going to affect us negatively for now. And like I said, we might use some of it to our advantage, but it's, the sad part is it's going to be a negative effect for us for now.
Anybody got any other questions?
Well, I'm really glad that it's not going to affect our broadband. I mean, everyone of us here, and I've been here 14 years, going on 15, and my main purpose is trying to get Avery County broadband. And I'm glad to know it will hurt us. It will hurt us, but thankfully that it won't affect our broadband and maybe we can live with the other. I hope so. But they've really got it figured wrong and we are letting them know that. What is our population they're saying now, Philip?
They're saying it grew from July 18 to July 2021, which the census was January 1st of 2020, by 3.77%, which if we take the 2020 number, would be 678 people.
And your tax base reduced.
And our tax rate base is healthy. Our median house cut, whole income is healthy. And the other one they look at is our unemployment rate, which is the top 10 in the state. It's 90th in the state. We fill all the positions that we got in the county, we can make that 99.
Hello. But we'll move along.
We'll move along and-
Work with it best if we can.
Work with it what we can.
Yes, we'll do it.
Just want to point out, there's a letter in your information items also from the school of government and I just wanted to say that out loud, what a great resource school of government is and how lucky we are to have them in North Carolina. So I appreciate that being part of our budget and I appreciate the taxpayers for that, allowing that to be part of our budget because it is a great resource. I just wanted to say a couple of other things. The High Country Caregivers, this is the organization that helps grandparents and aunts and uncles take care of their, of a child that is in their custody and they are having an open house on Thursday, December the 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00 and it's open to any family member that's raising a child. That's, you know, not your immediate blood, that it's just an open house so you can help the public understand what they do. That is on our website and also on our Facebook page. And it is Christmas season and I wanted to mention the convenience site schedule because it's always big and you're going to have a lot of wrapping paper and things to throw away. So the convenience sites will be closed for, for Christmas on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so the 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And they will be open at 6:30 a.m. on Monday morning. So let's try to not everybody go at one time and, and I appreciate our site attendants and I appreciate Eric, what they do, but we will be opened up, back up on Monday morning. Okay?
And our Linville site will take Christmas trees.
They will take your recycled Christmas tree.
Try our best to not send them beside the road, lay there till the state decides to pick them up. But they will take Christmas trees, so try to get that out there every morning.
And if there's no other questions, that's all I have as far as updates for today.
You done good.
Robert, they say I talk too long, but that wasn't too bad.
Yeah.
For your first one, okay.
As it would give.
All right.
So we've got all of our informational items took care of, right?
I think, I believe so, and I hope so.
He used to list out what he was going to talk about and now he just puts it as general updates.
All right, we'll move right along. We've pounded him enough. We'll go to Caleb, our finance officer, to report 3.4B.
Thank you, Board, for your confidence in me. I'm blessed every day to get to come to work with some of the greatest people, greatest management team, county attorney, all the department heads, and I couldn't do it without my staff, Ashley, Starr, Dennis. They're the best and they make the job so much easier and of course, great Board to work under. Thank you all so much for that. I greatly appreciate it. Don't take it lightly, I really don't. I have a few items for your consideration this evening. Item number one, the sheriff's office has received an insurance reimbursement for the $2,019 Dodge Durango. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit auto supplies $3,990.71 and to credit insurance reimbursements $3,990.71.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
To approve. Check.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, Board. Item number two, the DSS project ordinance needs to be adjusted. The projected estimate for architectural fees needs to be modified to reflect actual project estimates. Request the Board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit architect engineering $133,000 and to credit general construction $130,000.
Do I hear a motion to approve the DSS project ordinance?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Item number three, the Department of Central Dispatch is requesting funding for a complete radio tower upgrade. Request the Board approve the following budget amendment to debit capital radio equipment $1,217,000 and to credit fund downs appropriated $1,217,000.
Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Move to approve.
Dispatch. Do I hear a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no.
Item number four, the sheriff's office is requesting funding to purchase two new sheriff's vehicles along with the necessary upfitting and undercoating and striping. This will replace the one totaled vehicle and add one new vehicle to the current fleet. We will receive an insurance reimbursement for $32,640, which will help offset this expense. Law enforcement vehicles, as you all know, are proving very difficult to locate and this will help the sheriff's office stay fully equipped. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay auto $114,800 to credit insurance reimbursements $32,640 and to credit fund downs appropriated $82,160.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No.
Item number five, the Avery County jail, as you all know, was shut down from August to mid-October. During this time, inmates were housed at Out of County Detention Centers. This resulted in an increase in inmate housing contract expenses. Request the Board adopt the following budget amendment to debit inmate housing $58,996.35. Gas and diesel fuel $732.75 and to credit fund downs appropriated $59,729.10.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the inmate housing?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No.
All right. And the last item I have before you, the county board of commissioners must vote to approve the official bonds on the first Monday in December. Request that Avery County Board of Commissioners to approve the bonds that have been presented before you.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? No.
That is all I have for y'all's consideration today unless you have any questions for me. Thank you, Ken. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anything from our attorney?
I do not have anything that requires the Board's attention that hasn't already been addressed.
All right. We thank Michelle for all the work that she does for us.
I'd like to thank the Board for reappointing me and allowing me to continue to serve.
We're glad that you're willing to do it. It's a big job. I don't guess there are days that we don't have to call hardly. All right. 3.5, staff reports and requests. Do we have anything?
We do not, Madam Chairman.
Do we have anything, Michelle, for closed session?
I do not have anything.
All right. We'll go to 3.7, the approval of the minutes. We have one regular meeting and the rest of them is special meetings that we had to have, talking about the radios and different things. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of these meetings?
Move your prayers forward.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. All right. 3.8, agenda consent items. I think we had one or something like that. And they are approved by consent. And we've mentioned 3.9, our informational items. Philip has spoke about all those that needed to be approved. And 3.10, our upcoming meetings. Cindy, you don't tell us about these meetings?
Well, we have our Christmas lunch on December the 14th at 12 o'clock. That's for our employees.
All right.
And then our next regular meeting is January the 2nd at 3:30.
Okay.
And don't forget, if you're not going to do your own shopping for the door prizes, don't forget to give Cindy her down your $50.
So we can shop for it. Shop for it.
And our Christmas luncheon will be out at our Avery County community center. And I'd like to say that we appreciate the good year that God has given us to be able to do the things that we've done for the county and we're all looking forward. We make it until the first of the year to start again. All right, do I, if we don't have anything else, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Move we adjourn and Merry Christmas.
All right. And I think we all-
So one time a year, we have a cookie and some hot chocolate and some other beverages.
And we do want to thank Philip, the decorations looks very nice. I don't know, Cindy said Philip done them, so that's one time we have to break on, but it does look nice.
Tara, Philip didn't do it.
Okay, now who done them, because I know I didn't. Oh, it was the magic wand that done them.
Ms. Tara helped a whole lot this year, so thank, thank her and the veteran prepared office.